One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three is our roll call. Gabriel, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Kaczynski?
Here.
Commissioner Crandall?
Here.
Chair Pro Tem Wu?
Here.
Vice Chair Blackwell?
Here.
And Chair Rulon?
Here. Item four, special orders of business, we have none. Item five is our minutes. We have two sets of minutes. The first is the regular study session of February 3, 2021. Is there, are there any changes or a motion?
Will we approve the study session minutes?
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Kaczynski. Call the roll. Commissioner Blackwell?
Hi.
Commissioner Brown?
Hi.
Commissioner Kaczynski?
Hi.
Commissioner Crandall?
Hi.
Commissioner Wu?
Hi.
And Rulon votes aye, passes unanimously. Our next set of minutes is the regular planning commission meeting of February 3, 2021. Do we have a motion or changes?
Chair, I have a change I would like to propose. On page, on page three, at the end of the second bullet item, add a phrase, reading, and the lack of a demonstration of hardship to justify the lot coverage variance.
Design use of community accommodations. And could you repeat that one more time, please?
Out of, out of the phrase, phrase, and the lack of a demonstration of hardship to justify the lot coverage variance.
I don't think I'd agree with that.
Well, you don't have to agree with that. That's what had transpired in the meeting. You stated that.
Well, I, I, I think it did. But just by the mere fact of the dimensions of the lot, I think it did demonstrate.
I understand you can have a different opinion. What the, what the minutes reflect is the history of the meeting, is what happened in the meeting.
Yeah, I, I think-
Different opinion, that's fine.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Wu is saying that he indicated that that was his opinion. The extra words that he wants added was the opinion he expressed at that meeting. So the question is, is, did he, did he publicly express that? Or not? And that's for the, for the minutes.
Chairman?
I understand that, but by voting for it, we agreed that it did. So then it needs to also say it did, it did meet the criteria for variance.
Yeah, sure. You're welcome to add your, your points there. I just want to add, add, add about, that's, that's what I said.
I would be more comfortable if you want to put something that the commission stated different opinions on the compliance with the variance findings. That would be okay, because that's what happened.
Do you agree that I said what I just proposed? I mean, we can have a staff that, do you agree that I said that there was a lack of a demonstration of hardship to justify the lot coverage variance? It happened.
I would agree to it if you, if you want to personally use your name and say, and say that. I don't think the entire-
If the staff is okay with deciding specific commissioner's name, then I'm fine.
Yeah, Chairman and Commissioners, we, so we could do that. Just to let you know at the beginning of the bullet points in the minutes, it does say, it, it kind of lumps everything in together, right? Basically, in the bullet point, it says either individually or an agreement as commissioned. And so the planning commission felt more comfortable stating Commissioner Wu said that, then that definitely be the case. And you can do that. It's not typically what we've done in, in, in our, our minutes, but, but that, that can be done if the commission desires.
Um, I'd rather not just make a special case if we don't need to, but I, I know sometimes we put the word opined in there. Would you both be satisfied if we had the word, added the word opined to what Commissioner Wu was proposing? You know, comma, and opined that, and then what Commissioner Wu said?
Yes, absolutely. That's my opinion.
Okay. Bart, would that be acceptable to you?
I, I, I think that would show what actually occurred.
Okay. Any objections to? Commissioner Wu, could you read that one more time with the word opined in there? Just so Eileen can make sure she gets all the wording right.
So at the, yes, at the end of the second bullet item, add a phrase, and opined that the lack of a demonstration of hardship to justify the lot coverage variance.
Thank you. Any other changes or motion?
Well, I, I, I do have a problem with that now. We opined the lack of making the statement that there was a lack of evidence. And I'm not sure that's the case.
I'm sorry, so you're saying you, you don't recall Commissioner Wu?
Oh, I remember him saying it, that he, he's saying, we opined the lack of evidence. We opined Commissioner Wu's comment, there was a lack of evidence.
Commissioner Brown, I didn't say we. It's a, you know, it's, it's an individual opinion.
Can we just say, two commissioners opined?
Uh, yeah, we do, we do, we do kind of lump this in. I mean, there's a lot of opinions in here, as there usually are with, in, in the minutes. You know, that some say we can have completely contradictory opinions expressed in these bullet points, one after the other. So, I don't have a problem with the opined. But, you know, if, if, if that's what happened, you know?
If that statement was made, I, I actually like what Kuzin, I think Kaczynski, didn't you just say, two members opined the evidence to support a variance? I think, I think that's-
Okay.
That's, that's-
All right. I could vote for that. I think that's true. Okay, do we have a motion then?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the City of San Clemente Planning Commission meeting of February 3, 2021. As modified.
Second. Second. Motion by Wu, second by Crandall. I'll call the roll. Commissioner Blackwell? Commissioner Blackwell?
It, uh-
Hi.
It may be that's-
Commissioner Brown?
Hi.
Commissioner Kaczynski?
Hi.
Commissioner Crandall?
Hi.
Commissioner Wu?
Hi.
And Rulon votes aye, passes unanimously. Uh, next order, excuse me, next item is six oral and written communications. Members of the public may address the commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. Speakers can submit their comments on agenda items to the planning commission electronically. Material may be emailed to www.san-clemente.org/pcpubliccomment. Transmitted by 3:00 PM on planning commission meeting days is recommended. The planning commission is not permitted to discuss or take action on items that do not appear on the agenda. Uh, I didn't see anything coming across an email. Gabriel, do we have any non-agenda item communications from the public?
Just checked, and Chairman, there are no comments.
Okay, very good. Item seven is a consent calendar. We have no items on our consent calendar. And item eight is our public hearings. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony not to exceed three minutes per speaker. Following closure of the public hearing, the planning commission will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. And we have one public hearing item, specific plan amendment 20-393. Christopher, you want to take us through it?
Yes, good evening, Chair Commissioners. Christopher Wright, associate planner. This item is a city initiated specific plan amendment to the Marblehead Coastal specific plan, the Rancho San Clemente specific plan, and then the Talega specific plan. It's the second and last phase of a project the city council directed to remove references to toll roads and state route 241. That is no longer proposed, and therefore the references are outdated. The, the first phase was general plan amendment that the planning commissioner considered in January last month. And those items were actually approved by the city council last night. This would complete the project. The staff recommendation is to approve, adopt a attached resolution that would forward recommendation to the city council to approve the proposed specific plan amendments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for staff? I don't see any, so I will open the public hearing. I haven't seen any emails, but Gabriel, have we received any emails recently for this public hearing item?
Chairman, there are no comments or emails.
Then I will close the public hearing, and I'll open this for commission discussion or motion. Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I don't have a lot of, I thought the, the entire effort that Chris put together here is very clear. The track changes make it startlingly clear which parts of the specific plan are to be amended. So I see, I think it's a great cleanup, and I would propose a little discussion and, and a proposal to approve.
Any other discussion? It, this works for me. I think they're very straightforward. It all, it's all pretty, I think it's all kind of wrote and well done by Christopher to make it clear, clear to the commission of, of that fact, so.
I'll read, I'll make the motion if you'd like.
Great.
I move that the planning commission approved resolution PC 21-005. The resolution of the planning commission of the City of San Clemente, California, recommended the city council approve specific plan amendments 2393, removal of references to the state route 241 toll road extension and the Marblehead Coastal specific plan, Rancho San Clemente specific plan, and the Talega specific plan, and making associated, associated sequel findings.
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Wu. I'll call the roll. Commissioner Blackwell?
Hi.
Commissioner Brown?
Hi.
Commissioner Kaczynski?
Hi.
Commissioner Crandall?
Hi.
Commissioner Wu?
Hi.
And Rulon votes aye, passes unanimously. All right, thank you, Chris. Well done.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Item nine is new business. We have none. Item 10 is old business, and we have none. So item 11 is reports of commissioners and staff. Gabriel, I know you wanted to point out the, the North Beach website for us, historic website.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman, and members of the planning commission. And I'm going to ask Tara if she can pull up the website that we're going to demonstrate. So just giving you an update that Jonathan Lightfoot did prepare an update on the North Beach Historic District to the city council last night. And one of the things that was prepared, and it's part of our implementation of this, is preparing a website, informing the public that we do have a North Beach Historic District. So this website was created, it's, it's connected to the homepage of the city. And so anyone from the public can access this site now. It is live. So we did create this, this, this website has a lot of photographs and history about North Beach. And I'm going to ask if you could scroll down a little bit. And so on this, yeah, you can stop here on this map. So there is a, a map on the page, and you can pursue a guided tour in North Beach. And so it basically shows all the destinations that are numbered. And it's about six, six points that, or seven points we identified on here for the public to visit. One would start in the parking lot where there's public parking. And then the next site you could see on there is number two, that would be the Ole Hansen Beach Club. Three is the San Clemente Casino. Number four on that map is the Miramar Theater. And five is Bowling Center, and then six OC Fresca. Now, the last site is number seven, so one of, it's not historic site, but since we would want visitors that are coming to North Beach to also visit some of our other attractions, seven is the entrance to the beach trail from North Beach. So we'd like people to visit that as well. So Tara, I'm going to ask you if you can scroll down a little bit. So you can get more information on each of these locations by, by number. You can keep scrolling down. The casino, scrolling down. The theater, bowling alley. And the OC Fresca or the Aquarium Cafe, and then the North Beach Trail. You can stop there for a second. And so we start off with, after you do that, that tour, or if you want to get information along the way, we do provide a lot more detail here. So here's the North Beach history. And I'm going to ask Tara if she can use the swipe function. So basically what we added were historic photographs compared with what the site looks today. You know, how it looks today. And so that's a cool feature, I thought, we added that allows us to be a little more interactive for the public and really be able to compare the past to the present. You can continue to scroll down, Tara. So just more information about the, you can stop there. North Beach Historic District, the process that we went through. So there was the community tour that occurred on February 28th, that we were able to hear from some of the owners of these, some of these locations, as well as some of the plans for the historic district. And so there's some photos there just to document that for the public, let, let them know how we got to this point. You can continue to scroll down, Tara. Stop there. So also with North Beach Historic District, I think it's important to mention the importance of Ole Hansen in the history, and there's a little bit of that history provided here. Continue, scroll down, please. So again, there are some swipe photos that allow you to see some of these historic photos compared to how they look today. And so I thought that was a pretty neat feature. If you can scroll down a little bit more to the next one. Yeah, same thing, more photos, really cool. Continue to go down. Great. Keep going. So, oh, scroll a little bit more up to this photo. So, or actually, one, one more? There we go. Or a little bit, yeah, there we go. So we have San Clemente Theater, and so one of the things we wanted to show was a historic photo. But we didn't want to show the, the Miramar Theater under construction. Maybe that's not the, the best representation, but we did want to show the public what it would look like in the future. These are some of the approved plans. Gives them an idea of what's to come. You can scroll down a little bit more, actually to the end of this paragraph here, right there. I'm sorry. Just go up a little bit above Bowling Center. And so there's a link actually that we have from the San Clemente Theater to a page that the San Clemente Historical Society hosts. And it has some great information about the, the Miramar Theater, including a lot of events that were hosted there. So you can access that by clicking on that link for more information. It's really, really neat information that I didn't know existed until last week. You, you want to try clicking on that? So it'll take you to another website, and you might have seen this presentation by the Historical Society in the past, but, you know, it talks about the architect for the, the theater and the other theaters that he designed in other, other places throughout California. But you, you can go back to, back to the main site. If you can scroll down, please. Same thing with the Bowling Center. We wanted to show it, the historical photo looked like compared to the present. And then we have the Aquarium Cafe. And so this was the best photo we can, we could find. And obviously, right now, tenant is OC Fresca, even though they're closed right now. And then continue down. And then just a swipe photo comparing the past to the present. And then if you could just go towards the end. And so, you know, obviously acknowledging the city council and the planning commission as well, the Historical Society making this happen. And then Miley Stivers from the Beaches Parks and Recreation Department helped take some of the current photos that we have on this page. And then you can kind of see a, a menu across the top horizontally, just to, just want to access specific things on this website. It's really easy to navigate. So that's, that's the website. I just wanted to show, showcase that to you, so you can share with the public. My hope in, in the future is that this will, you know, even be more exciting to the public when the Miramar Theater is open, that project is open, and hopefully OC Fresca opens up again. Because if you were to visit North Beach, there's not a lot of places for the public that are open in, in terms of buildings to, to enter into. But with the food hall opening up, I think that will really be a driver for the North Beach Historic District. Some of the next steps to implement the historic district would be adding signage from the freeway. For example, if you've ever been to the City of Orange Historic District that they have there, you'll see some of the signage on the freeway that lets the public know that there's something special to see off the freeway and possibly some directional signage that would direct you to the historic district. So that's the end of my presentation. Just want to show that to you and see if you have any questions.
Gabriel, this is a- That's a great. My own comment is a sliding bar is a very good idea and interesting, interactive way for people to explore, but it requires perfect alignment. So I want, if we, if we can, this is a very time consuming if we need that perfect alignment. So maybe we can just put the photos side by side. Unless we can get a very good alignment so people can see that.
Yeah, that's, Commissioner, that's a, that's a great comment. And they're not perfectly aligned right now. I would, I would admit that. And so I think we want to get those perfectly aligned. So if, if you notice that, then other people are going to notice it, and then it's a distraction, right? From the material that we have provided, so.
I'll go to the real city website when you get it on there and try it out, then we'll give you feedback.
Yeah, it is connected to the, the main homepage of the city website. So there's a banner on the, on the homepage that you can link to the website.
I think it's a great effort, appreciated, and a great presentation by you and Beaches Parks and the IT pit, and it's also a great start. Thank you very much. And then see what we have to do with, you know, Commissioner Wu's valued comment, and maybe make it better. Great, thank you.
No, it's great that they're doing that, and it's, it's nice to see. It's a nice, nice little website to focus in on there on North Beach. It's nice.
We're very excited about it. And I just want to, if the city has any marketing strategy to, to let the people, let the world know that we just have this historic district. So in the future, we can attract more people to come to visit, obviously.
Yeah, I think Jonathan Lightfoot will be working on that as, in his capacity as the economic development coordinator for the city. So, yeah, if you have any ideas, also share them with him. He's, he's been thinking about events that could actually be held in the district, but right now is not a good time to have events.
Former planner is on the third floor, now making, making more.
Yeah, yeah. So we were thinking, you know, there could be guided tours and celebration that really commemorates this. Maybe people dressed up like people dressed up in the twenties when we do this. There's a lot of ideas that he's discussed. It's just some of these can't happen right now.
Gabriel, not, not to get too mundane and the, in, in kind of something fun that we've got here, but I will just put a bug in your ear about the parking, the semi-annual parking studies we do in North Beach. Because one thing that happens is whenever we do those, when we get those, we've done the study of the North Beach visitor-serving area, but not the adjoining residential area. And parking costs in the visitor-serving area, and it does not cost in the residential area. In summers in particular, you see people going. So particularly if we're, you know, we've got more and more focus on North Beach, which is great. So we're probably going to get more people, and we run the risk of the, the more costly parking pushing people into the more residential areas. So just next time you do the parking study in that area, it'd be good to make the area a little wider and make that distinction to see if, you know, how much of an impact that is or isn't actually having. Be appreciated.
Gabriel.
Sorry, you went on mute, Gabriel, sorry.
We're trying to assess whether we're going to be doing the parking studies in the summer. We actually skipped it the past summer because of the pandemic. So we'll, we'll see how all this is working out, because we don't want to do the counts and then realize right now we have some parklets out there right now too, right? So that affects the counts. Not in North Beach, but in, in Del Mar. So maybe things get better and parklets are still out there. Maybe we can only do North Beach. We'll, we'll figure that out now that have an update with commission.
Okay. Chair Rulon brought up a very good point about the parking, because with the new historical structure, historic district being established into the Miramar Theater being open in the future, the parking demand and the pattern would dramatically change. And maybe it's a time for the city to look into the possibility to reactivate that parking benefit district. I know it's in the code, but it is, is not active. But so something should be done.
Any? Anything else on the historic district?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. I have one quick item, really just something I wanted to bring to staff's attention, something maybe to be aware of and to look at. I know it was a year or two ago when we approved, the planning commission and city approved a settlement with Capo Shores, and it, it had to do with making a portion of that street. I can't remember the name, but that street for Capo Shores, the southern portion of it is, was a public right of way if I'm, I'm going from memory here. So forgive me if I'm wrong. And I was down there the other day, and I noticed two things. One is there is a no trespassing sign at the entrance to Capo Shores. And if I'm right, and the street to the left or the south is a public right of way, then that no trespassing sign shouldn't be implying that that part of it is, it would, you would be trespassing. So there may be an improperly placed no trespassing sign there. But also at the end of that south street where that public right of way ends, there is a fence, which I believe has always been owned by Capo Shores. And on the other side of that fence is public beach. So we have public right of way and public beach with a private fence preventing you from moving between the two. So those might be a couple of things that the city wants to take a look at. You know, like I said, I'm going from memory in terms of what we approved. But if I'm, if I'm right about that, it seems like it might be something where that, there shouldn't be a fence there blocking, you know, two areas of-
We have, we have proved that, probably have to have code enforcement look at it.
Yeah, it might be a code enforcement issue, so.
Chair, I, I agree with you on your comment on the trespassing sign. But at the end of the public right of way, I believe the fence is being installed by the city public works to get access to the drainage facility. I could be wrong, but that's my understanding.
And, and if that's so, then it would be something for the city to take a look at, because at the, at the time that was installed, that probably wasn't, it was in dispute as to whether it was a public right of way or not. And it seems odd that we would have public beach, public right of way, and put a fence preventing you from doing that. So whoever's responsible for the fence, it may be something to consider and open that up a little bit so that people can actually use the public right of way to access the beach.
Yeah, Chairman, the, my memory on that isn't clear, so I'll look into it and see if I can get a report back to the commission at the next meeting.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Chairman, the other thing I was going to mention, just for the next meeting, we will have a study session, and that's going to be a part two of the study session that we've had on the South Alcomia Real mixed use standards. So just want to let you know we're going to bring that back to the planning commission.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I'd just like to compliment Gabriel and Chris Wright in the effort went together to get Henry Lenny on that study session we had there a few days ago, I thought was excellent, and I'm glad I attended. I think so, a couple of commissioners attended, I thought was very well done.
Thank you. And is there anything else for the report section? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll, I'll read that if you'd like.
Sure.
We adjourn to the next regular meeting. We adjourn to the next regular meeting, the study session and planning commission that will be held on March third, twenty twenty one at six P M. Be a teleconference.
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Crandall. I'll call the roll. Commissioner Blackwell?
Hi.
Commissioner Brown?
Hi.
Commissioner Kuzinski?
Hi.
Commissioner Crandall?
Hi.
Commissioner Wu? Commissioner Wu?
Hi.
And ruling votes I passes unanimously. So thank you for everybody. That was a quick one and we will see.